The holiday concerts and programs are well underway. The while rehearsals are well underway. So band, choir, and also as December is rolling around, the musical, the High School Musical, was announced as The Addams Family. So that's gonna be a very fun piece yet.
Rise, rise.
Yes, it'll be a very fun piece coming around in March. So that's about it for the arts. But then, in terms of sports, wrestling, basketball, and hockey are all underway. Wrestling and basketball haven't had games or matches yet, but hockey just had a game the other day and they downed Medford in a nine-zero, Steven opener. We entered number ten in the state for hockey, so I'm hoping the guys will have another repeat this season this year. And then finally, for the student council fundraiser that we do every year, captive poultry, we fell short of our 2,700 items/dollar goal, but we fell just short of 1,000 items for the food pantry, which is still, which is still very good. People are very enthusiastic about dressing up and like at one point they were like hippies walking down the hallway and so it was a very fun week. But yes, that's all that's happening right now in December and then come January things will start rolling around in terms of sports.
Do you know the dates of the winter concerts?
Yes, the band concert is December 5th at 7:30. I don't quote me on the choir concert, but I believe it's the 12th.
Well, that's, I can ask her right now, Bobby, could you set up a calendar with all of the holiday programs and concerts? Cindy has that calendar.
Sure.
Wonderful. I don't know who they're ever gonna cast as Uncle Fester, but I'd be interested to see it. I think that's a, that's a unique choice, I think, for a musical.
Yes, it is.
But I think it'll be very...
I'm impressed. I'm not sure how could you do The Addams Family as a musical?
I'm sure it's there.
It is. It's actually, it is quite different than a movie or than a series.
Okay, do you know what a series, Nikki?
Of course I do.
She has good parents.
She's watched on YouTube.
I have.
Yes, I have, actually, I watched. That's beside the point. But they didn't do tryouts to do this?
So tryouts are in mid-December.
Okay.
Okay, well, cool. Anybody have any questions of Nikki other than the rather strange ones who just...
Good job.
Nikki, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, board committee reports. In, well, actually, the gentleman to my right has volunteered.
Oh.
So the committee on instruction met on November 1st in the media tech room at the high school. Jeannie Long called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Meeting members present were Jeannie Long, Danielle Yushka, Scott Jensen, and JD Schrader was excused. Was not there. Other board members present, Mike Bolding and Andy Mary. Administrators present were Brian Misfeldt, Cindy Fisher, Heidi Seabird, Proil, Tom Zanzel, and Kelly Fessbender. Mike Wordials shared a presentation on the no bulk in school forest. Mike reviewed the date, reviewed data on past and present usage. He reviewed current programs, including summer programming, which will include overnight camping trips, environmental days, logging presentations, and physical education classes. Mike explained the plans for a new environmental center and possible improved access to the lake fromage. He stressed the need to increase community awareness about the forest. Future plans also include an update to the website and continues fundraising to support our school forest property. Then Tom Zanzel, Kelly Fessbender, and Heidi Seabird, say that again?
Proil.
Proil, provided an overview to the committee regarding professional development. They shared the process in which our district is working to develop our professional learning community with guaranteed curriculum. Kelly explained the instructional practices being used by teachers throughout the district. Heidi shared changes that have occurred in the special education department and additionally how staff is shifting to outcomes with students versus compliance. Tom Zanzel then presented the information on youth option programs for juniors and seniors at high school. A short discussion followed. Then Tom Zanzel and Cindy Fisher explained the details involved in planning and organizing the district's in-service days for faculty. Not mentioned the instructional technology training for all staff as well as the PBIS program, which is yet another part of creating a positive environment and climate or to provide the best quality education for our students. Ames' update was postponed as Tollif Wiki was not in attendance. And, excuse me. Cindy Fisher shared changes made to policy 345.4 and 345.4R, promotion assignment and retention of students. This policy filed in a full board for a second reading and approval on tonight's date. The next committee meeting will take place December 6th at 7 o'clock at the Anago High School IMC. Meeting was adjourned by unanimous consent at 8:15.
Well, thank you Scott for filling in for Jeannie. Any questions of Scott?
And Rosie did not see the school forest presentation.
Yes.
Thanks Scott, appreciate you filling in. We'll jump to committee on operations. JD.
The operations committee meeting was held November 15th at the high school IMC. The meeting was called to order at 7:02. Let me see, board members present, myself, Patrick, Tara, Scott, Jessica, Danielle, JD, Jeannie, and Mike. Administrators, Brian Misfeldt, Tim Prunty, Jake Leiterman, Tina Verhagen, Tom Zanzel, Matt Marant. There was no public comment. Presentation, Trap Club, Chris Lucas presented information on Langley County Falcons' trap shooting club and their request to become a Red Robin Shooting Club. Explained goals, club profile, competition equipment, coaching practices, and all related club guidelines. The committee will consider their request and will intervene. Staffing updates, Tina Verhagen provided a staffing update to the committee. The district is currently in need of a special education teacher, special instructional assistant, middle school secretary, and middle school counseling department secretary in interviews where it being held. Update on November 2016 referendum results and consideration of future referenda. The committee discussed the recent election results around the state. Brian Misfeldt shared the election results in detail. Discussion was held regarding the possibility of running another referendum in spring or fall of 2017. Discussion and possible action. Procedure for establishing a new school-sponsored club activities. Brian Misfeldt explained to the committee the need for the district to have a policy in place regarding the requests of various clubs, organizations, and teams to become school-sponsored. This discussion will be addressed again at a future meeting. Budget calendar, Tim Prunty shared the budget calendar with the committee members, which outlines the duties that are performed each month pertaining to the budget. Motion by Mary, second by need to forward the item named budget calendar to the regular board meeting tonight for approval. Health reimbursement agreement and retiree health insurance plan. The coverage benefit for retirees with a minimum requirement, requirements for retirement will extend to three years versus 18 months of availability if that person qualifies. Motion by need, second by McKenna, to forward the retiree health insurance plan availability increasing to three years versus 18 months to the regular board meeting on November 2nd for approval. All were in favor. HVAC project at West, Jake Leiterman updated the committee on the HVAC project at West. Discussion followed. This item will also be forwarded to the regular board meeting tonight. The next meeting will be Tuesday, December 20th at 7:00 PM in the high school media tech prior to the regular board meeting. And the meeting adjourned at 9:30.
Since then, we have filled the middle school secretary position. Actually, Carla Pyatt, I believe, has been offered the position and I think accepted. So congratulations, Carla.
Anyone with any questions for Andy on the operations committee? JD, thank you. We will keep moving right along here. We'll jump down to the board action portion. Item A, reading of the, second reading of the policy, 341.34 Wellness Policy on Nutrition and Physical Education. So we'd be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the revisions to policy 341.34 Wellness Policy on Nutrition and Physical Education as presented.
Second.
A motion from Mr. McKenna, second for Mr. Mary. Any discussion on that? I think you've all had a chance to review the policy on board docs. There is just some, appears to be just some slight rewording to meet, I believe it's meet federal guidelines, correct?
Correct.
You know, I struggle with lunch. Just doesn't seem very nutritious.
I would say that's tied to the federal lunch guidelines. I think quite frankly, if we could fund it on our own, we'd be able to do much more and probably provide a much better and healthier lunch, but if you're going to accept federal dollars, reimbursement for the lunch, you really have to follow our guidelines and that guidelines really impact what we can serve and what we're able to serve. So, you know, even though the intent is there with the federal lunch program, it greatly impacts what we're able to provide with our students. And I think our food service director and business director and past food service directors would agree with you that they wish they could do more, but with this restriction, so...
Does that, like, our financial struggles, like, would we have more options if we were, had more financial...
If we're able to fund our school lunch in different ways and weren't, weren't feeling like we needed the reimbursement from the federal school lunch program, we could certainly do a number of different things.
And I should reword that better too. Like, are there better options available, but because we don't have as much money and we have to pick other things too? Like, does that make a difference? I don't know.
Yes. You know, I don't know that there's other options in terms of reimbursement, but if we were financially better off and didn't have to count on federal school lunch reimbursement, this is definitely a topic I think I'll ask Tim to bring forward and talk to you about at a future, future meeting, because he knows far more about it than I would. And Sarah DeBoer, our nutrition, our school nutrition director, would know more, but a lot of what we're serving is tied to counting on that reimbursement from federal funds and being tied to that really restricts them what we can do.
And some of the challenge too is, I mean, we, food has to be prepared centrally and brought out to, you know, seven individual, or, you know, I mean, a certain number of individual schools and so you have to, you know, you can't prepare meals at each facility, which would, you know, just be a different type of quality.
But, well, it's even different than that, though. They can't purchase robin. It has to be pre-cooked. And I, on one hand, I understand because my son has a peanut allergy, I understand requesting, like, parents and having more prepackaged foods, but on the other hand, I think that's like, you know, there's some exceptions, but I think it's counteracted to having healthier foods, to be buying prepackaged, pre-prepared foods.
JD, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking you, but I believe even potatoes are...
We're back in.
We're back in, okay. For a while, potatoes were out, okay?
High-profile.
That high-profile lobbying group, the potato drawers have got back in.
But even that's all prepared potatoes, right? It's not like they're buying fresh potatoes.
No. So, I will ask Tim to bring that forward because he's got some ideas as well, but...
It is, you know, and like even like I struggle, like, I feel like there's, even like with the snacks that they send home, that list that we can take, like, there's something to be said about having your child experience. You know, I remember doing that with my mom and, you know, that's a learning thing too. And now are, we take cheap roast guacamole bars or goldfish crackers. I just, I just...
Do you have a list of what you're allowed to bring? Is that what you're saying?
Because you can't be naked cupcakes.
Yeah, and you can, or, or banana, or healthy, you know, healthy snacks.
Federal guidelines restrict us from having parents bring in foods.
Yeah, and I think the other thing about food is a whole bunch of it is government service food.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think, I think...
Pretty sure it is.
I think it is.
And when it comes to purchasing thing.
So is that why, so what you're saying is that with the, because we're part of the, because we're taking federal money, they say, all right, you get reimbursement, but you're gonna, you're gonna buy what we tell you you can buy. Is, am I understanding that?
Well, it's very much tied to portioning and what they deem to be healthy foods and, you know, I don't wanna speak too much with it because I don't want us to get the feeling that we should be pulling out of the federal school lunch program without a better plan because we do receive a lot of money tied to that, but...
But it's an interesting topic.
You follow their requirements if you're gonna do it, and I don't know that it's necessarily completely in terms of buying up the surplus, but...
Well, you buy the surplus, right, 'cause it's cheap.
Right, and...
Get this garden going more, so she go.
Cheap, it's cheap.
But that's not a horrible idea. I mean, that's what they do in Japan, where they, from start to finish, the kids prepare their meals.
But I think what Tim and Jake would tell you as well is if you're going to use food from your old school garden, you need to have a special prep area installed in order to use it.
Right, oh, I understand, there's a lot of hurdles. But I'm wondering if, is there any way to supplement it?
I think there is, but I think you're gonna need more information from Sarah and Tim before you...
Yeah, there might be, but I think we need to leave that up to the experts to delve into it.
Yeah, it's like, interesting to see how much we'd have to add to a referendum to, to switch out of the government.
Well, but it's important, I mean, it's...
There are a lot of parents that hate the meals.
And I think, you know, North Elementary is piloting a grant that they did where they're getting, they have fresh, fresh, it's a fresh fruit snack and vegetable thing that, that they applied for and got. So I mean, I do think...
We did that last year.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I think, different opportunities, you know. Food policy is just a huge, you know, issue with a lot of different districts. And I think a lot of districts have done different things, but you're right, a lot of districts with perhaps sometimes more resources.
Like, I feel like down in Appleton area, my, since kids have a better menu.
I remember we were at Menominee Falls Thursday, Friday, and I know Tim, because this is a pet project of his as well, made a point to check the Menominee Falls school lunch.
What'd they have?
And he wasn't impressed and we actually, he had follow-up questions for the students giving us a tour and they were not impressed either, so...
They were all Korean.
They were, a lot of, and they, the students who gave us our tour indicated that their friends all bring lunch home.
Wasn't there a Twitter account a couple of years ago of people taking pictures all over the country of their school lunch, you know, all complaining about it all across the country?
Yes.
But I think, I think what's important to note, especially, because now you're getting a high school and I, at that point, the students are making their own decisions about what they're eating. But, you know, in elementary, you know, if you see like the strawberries, which most children love strawberries, but if you see the strawberries they serve, I mean, if, if that's a child's introduction to strawberries, they're gonna be like, mm, and they're not gonna know that they can go in Mary's Brayers and get delicious strawberries.
Let's not go that far.
But it sets the tone, yeah, but it sets the tone.
Now we know where this is all coming from.
I think there's a plan to...
But it sets the tone.
Let's bring this back around to the policy.
But it, it does set the tone.
It does, yep.
For our students in nutritious language helps just, you know, fuel their bodies and their brains and it's very important, so...
It's a tremendous issue.
Well, perhaps we can, Sarah, come into an operations committee?
Yeah.
Discuss it a little bit or...
That'd be a great idea.
Okay, we'll do that then. So, we had, you have a motion on the floor as far as the second reading of the policy. Any other discussion? Bobby, roll call.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Tara Giselle.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Scott Jensen.
Yes.
And Mike Boldy.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Alrighty, item B, first reading of the policy, three point, or 345.4 and 345.4R. Any questions? You've, once again, you've had an opportunity to review it on board docs. I know there was some discussion.
This policy is brought forward basically because it was significantly outdated, but the key reason we brought it forward was it didn't reflect the credit requirements for high school. As Cindy and I went through it, there's a lot of discussion about our retention policy and the former policy identified specifically grades and state assessments as reasons for retention. And as I think we've talked about with the board before, we consider many, many more aspects in terms of retention, what goes into retention. So we updated the policy just to reflect all of the aspects that we consider and what likely had retention for students.
And this will go back to operations for a second reading, or second go around before it comes back to us.
Yep.
So I would ask everyone, Vivian, Jess, you had some?
On the first part of the policy, I see that it states in the last three paragraphs, I guess.
Are you in the R one, Jessica?
No, just on the policy, before I cut my part. It looks like it just refers to them as in retention, but wouldn't it apply also to advancement? As far as maybe, you know, if a parent is not happy with the decision to move or to not advance their child?
I think, Jess, if you look at the second paragraph, it may answer your question. Because it looks like...
I guess, but like the last paragraph just says that there's a disagreement regarding retention. So I mean, if it just says slash...
So we need to adjust to address promotion as well?
Right, advancement.
Yes.
Where you take promotion as opposed to...
Oh, yep, 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 I see what you're saying.
No.
Yep. We'll make those changes and bring it back.
Anyone else?
What's 504 again?
What is 504 plan? A 504 plan is kind of, IEPs are dictated by state statute for students with disabilities. A 504 plan is kind of, if it doesn't necessarily qualify for an IEP, we can use a 504 plan in its place and it's a student plan. To be honest, you've probably seen, they're still required by state law in some cases, but we've seen probably a decrease because just in general in education, we've gotten much better at addressing student needs as they come up rather than requiring a specific plan. So it used to be a, an avenue for getting students the help they needed if they did qualify with a disability for an IEP. Again, you don't see as many of them anymore just because we do generally try and treat each kid, each student as an individual learner anyway and address their needs as they come up. But occasionally, we still will put them in places for certain scenarios. A good example, Patrick, would be, you know, a student with anxiety issues who may not qualify for a health plan or an IEP, but we know we need to make some changes for, and we'll create a 504 plan.
You can formalize it.
Yep.
Cool. Okay, anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, then we'll get that back to operations and bring that up at the next board meeting for the second reading. Okay, next up, RVA agreement for 2017, 2018.
I'll move the board approve the consortium agreement between Unified to the Serpicanico and the Rural Virtual Academy for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jensen, second by Mr. McKenna, discussion.
Brian, did you say our students, I guess I don't totally understand, member school districts will be assessed annually like .25 full-time equivalent, so we still get credit sort of towards our enrollment, our kids do this?
This is for, they're still coming as our students, that's for payment, what we pay to them. So if students are enrolled there, we pay .25, 25% of a full-time student enrolled there. So it's a good deal for us because we have a partnership with them, they're being educated through the RVA, we still receive money for the student, whereas without the consortium, to be honest, our students could still go to RVA and they could get full, well, not full, but open enrollment cost for the student, which is far more than 25%, closer to 75%.
Are there other online academies that our kids go to, or is this the main?
We have our Ames Academy, which is our in-house academy, but this is the only one we have a consortium with. If you look at our open enrollment numbers, we have students going to many virtual schools, but I would say this has been a way that we've been able to ensure that we keep, this is probably the, this is definitely the most, most cost-effective method for us to keep some of the...
Did you convince the other ones who went to other places to go to this one?
We contact families when we, if there are students that we see that we're not sure why they enrolled in that school or why their, our principals do contact them to get more information and sometimes it's a perfectly reasonable explanation. So we make contact, every year, we look at our open enrollment list and contact students who are in different, other districts and other virtual schools to determine what's out there and what we can do to get them back in our district. What I'll say is with Rural Virtual Academy, they are, really hold students accountable. I think in some cases, you know, if a student's not holding up, keeping up with their end of the bargain, they will dismiss them from their school and in those cases, sometimes you see students go to other virtual schools. I don't wanna comment directly on those virtual schools because I'm not as familiar with their programming, but I think one of the things with Rural Virtual Academy is they really do follow up with students, and if students aren't doing their work, they're dismissed, which isn't always the case.
How do they do that? Do they say, oh, you didn't watch the lecture this week, or is it more like an assigned it?
They watch the things they're getting completed. So the expectation is that students are completing work every week. And if they're not for multiple weeks, they follow up and say, you need to start, you know, following up. And if they're not, then they're, they're virtual program.
Nice. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Bobby, let's roll call then.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Tara Giselle.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Scott Jensen.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
And Mike Boldy.
Yes.
Mike, who was the second?
The second one was Doc Crockett. Okay, and let's see, thank you everyone, we will jump down to the budget calendar. Motion, please.
I move for approve budget calendar for 2017, 2018 school year as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mary, second by Ms. Galizal, discussion. You all had an opportunity to look this over and I know Tim gave a presentation on, a re-presentation on it at the ops meeting, so it just kinda lays off the timeline of when he needs to do things. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
We're in.
You're in the soul. Yeah, let's roll call, Bobby.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Tara Giselle, yes, Andy Mary.
Yes.
Scott Jensen.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Mike Boldy.
Yes.
Very good, thank you everyone. I'll jump down to the next item, health reimbursement arrangement and retiree health insurance plan before we get started.
This may be one where we'll have some discussion. At the committee meeting, we discussed the adjustments to the health reimbursement arrangement for teachers and administrators. I should say for teachers, because administrators have their own, their separate contract, but the discussion was, COBRA requires that we keep retired employees on our, on our, on our health insurance for at least 18 months after retirement. Right now, we allow them to remain on our health insurance for as long as they pay premiums. Right now, we allow them to remain on our health insurance for as long as they pay premiums, well, until they hit Medicare? Thank you. Until they hit Medicare. So the discussion at the committee level was how long we remain them to stay, and I think, you know, at the committee level, we discussed 36 months. However, you know, I think it's important for the whole board to have that discussion.
I think we're.
We're all there.
So regardless, decisions are made at the board meeting at the committee level. So right now, what we have in there is 36 months. That is open for discussion if the board chooses to, so I think the reason I'm bringing it up is to remind us that we don't make decisions at the committee level, we bring discussions forward.
Thank you for being so considerate.
So since you were once a teacher and.
He won't give us input, we tried that, right?
You're right, he's not going to. Do you think it's fair, like what are other districts doing?
What Tim will tell you after doing a lot of research on this is districts are either saying 18 months or they're saying nothing.
That's right.
I was a teacher, you know, I was very early in my career when Act 10 came through, so for me, it had very little impact because I just adjusted the way I planned for my future. The teachers that really impacts the most are those that are kind of in the middle of their career and were counting on the retirement benefits that were there. And then once grandfathered into the old system, you know, mid-career had to figure out different planning, so.
So like some of those were planning on getting money until 62 and they can retire at 55, and now they're not going to get that, but we would get them to figure it out.
If they still plan on retiring at 55, yeah. So I think the landscape's changed where retiring at 55 or 57 isn't quite as realistic as it once was for teachers. That's kind of where we're at now.
I'm just going to say after thinking about this for a week, that I'm kind of thinking we ought to make this 18 months because the teachers, you know, they can be on there as COBRA, but they're paying, they're paying this, they're paying for most of their insurance. We may, they may have some money set aside that in most cases would be gone in 18 months if we let them use all of that money for their premiums. It would be gone in 18 months if they pay that. And for us to keep them on our plan for 36 months is kind of high risk because people get to be my age problems set in. But, you know, if you have a few high-cost patients, it's going to drive our premiums up. And I think maybe Mike is the only one that's on the board, and you can remember back when we did have four or five high-cost people. Our premiums were going up 20% a year. And when your premium goes up that much, you make it up, I mean, we always made it up somewhere else, but it was teachers in eliminated positions to make that up. And it's not like people aren't going to have insurance, they, they can get insurance, you know. Even Donald has said he's not going to replace the part of Obamacare that ensures that everybody's eligible for insurance, even no matter what their condition. So I think when we look at the benefit for teachers here, they would probably rather have money, which would be more predictable for us to just say, we're going to give everybody $500 more than what this insurance premium will be if, if things go the wrong way for a couple of years.
So do you think to compensate them in a different way?
I think if we have the money, we can compensate them in a different way and they'll like it. I think reality says, yeah, we don't really have the money and, you know, it's okay to continue this as long as nothing goes wrong, but once it does, we're going to be sorry we did that.
Brian, I'm confused a little. I thought we said we had to give them 18 months because that's what COBRA required, but you're saying some districts give them 18 months and some districts give them nothing?
18 months or no requirement.
No restriction.
Which is what we, no restriction, which is what we currently have.
Oh.
So what Tim was getting at is he hasn't seen anything that's in between like the suggested 36 months. What he's seeing is 18 or no restriction.
Could we stop them from using their HRA funds to pay the premium? Okay, that's just like.
That's their money.
Okay, I didn't know if us writing that in there was like.
At that point, that's their money, once they're vested, those are their funds.
They get penalized if they go out by a boat or something.
They use it for outside of health costs.
All other costs.
And even if they don't use it all up at premiums, they can still use it on other costs.
It's just like a HSA, right, for a non-직업 employee?
A little bit different.
It's an HR. Or HR.
There's an HSA.
Okay, well, since we've had the discussion prior to, is there anyone willing to step forward and make a motion and potentially amend the point of, rather than ask?
I move the board approve the Health Reimbursement Arrangement and Retiree Health Insurance Plan as presented with an amendment that says 18 months versus the 36 months.
You just feel like you want to get as much money as we can into the countries we get going?
Bobby, the motion was made by Andy Mary, seconded by JD Schrader, and it is to amend it from the, in the second paragraph where it says retirees may stay on the plan for up to 36 months, stay on the plan for up to 18 months, or until Medicare eligible, whichever comes first. Any discussion on the motion as presented?
Someone that's had to reach out into the insurance world, I mean, it's not as rosy as it was projected to be. And it's not cheap, and any retiring teacher will have a lot of difficulties getting insurance in the marketplace that's reasonable on a fixed income, so we may have teachers working longer. I thought 36 months is a good idea, so.
Would you rather have teachers, I kind of feel like I'd want teachers to work longer, assuming they still like the kids who are trying. We're going to have a teacher who works.
So one way or other, we're paying, we'll be paying their insurance if they're working longer, we're paying their insurance, and they're going to be working later, so I mean, is it a little?
And the reality of things too, if, what Andy was referring to earlier, yeah, previously, years ago, we did have some catastrophic type situations that caused the premiums to escalate because we were, our payout was more. The last few years, we've been very fortunate, we haven't had the payouts, we've also been fortunate, the insurance companies haven't raised, as a matter of fact, no one here has even lowered the premiums. So we've been fortunate in that regard, but you don't have the crystal ball out that you can tell what's going to happen in the future either. And my guess is that is probably going to start going back in the other direction.
It's like we keep rolling and winning every year, the odds, I mean, actually, the reality is that it's going to go up.
Sooner or later.
We've been really lucky the past few years, really, you know, premiums are more and more expensive.
And you, Scott, you think that, I don't know, because in my experience, and it hasn't been a lot of COBRA, it's way expensive anyways.
Absolutely.
It's expensive, it's probably less than going out and getting a comparable plan like Calisk Marcus. But on the other hand, I go on the health market and it's, it's really expensive.
It is.
But you're just buying against that catastrophic thing that might happen.
Yeah, and I'd like to throw, you know, the teachers that have come with us substantial time of hack here, I, I think, I don't know, I think they've earned it, you know, they've been here for 20 years. You know, it's something to look forward to, and we talked, you know, at the committee meeting about the millennium and not looking past two years, three years, four years. But those employees will, you know, they'll bounce back somewhat else. So I don't know, I, I completely understand what you're saying, I just, you know, like having something to look forward to.
I agree with Scott, I struggle with it too. Is there, is there like a, like for so many years, and then can we revisit this in a couple of years, like these teachers that have been counting on it for, you know, and then they got changed? Does that make sense?
Well, what are we doing right now?
So if you retire at 57, we let them stay on the plan.
Buy their premiums.
So what will happen is some of them will spread out the funds we have, stay on and pay some out of pocket and, which is fine, the risk is, you know, as Andy and Mike have explained that our plan is really impacted by the costs we incur, so when you have some of those high costs, cost issues, it can drive the price up. We have been fortunate the last few years where we haven't had any of those, and you've actually seen decreases which are, don't ever happen.
Some cases. What percentage of our teachers do you think have many or over 25 years or over 20 roughly?
Yes.
Like 50 or like 50?
We have that list.
Yeah, we have a list off the top of my head, I could possibly.
I guess I got to ask what it's going to happen, let's take for example a teacher who retired at 55 and they're 60 now, and we change this, do they go off the plan like right now?
Good question.
Or do they stay on?
Or their grandfather did? My grandfather did?
I would think since they retired in the previous plan, they, they keep their previous benefits, I don't think we can change the benefits on someone who's.
So this is just for people who are currently employed?
Correct, correct.
So somebody that's worked for 25 years and retires at the end of the school year is going to get.
Well, can we do something different for people who've been here more than 20 years versus going forward?
Well, this is for people who have been here for 20 years.
Right, oh, this is only.
Only for people and, and 55-year-olds.
In order to qualify for anything and be vested.
20 years.
And you do work at least 20 years in the district and be 55 years rich.
I bet once we get rid of the borders for the marketplaces, I mean, maybe prices will come down and things will be better, I mean, with the new plan. It's a lot of doom and gloom right now, but you know, I mean, governmentally, there's unified government, you know, they're probably going to fix up the bad things that have happened, I mean, maybe we just see what, you know, accept this now and then reassess in a year or two after new plans have come out at the federal level.
You're being facetious, right?
Didn't think so.
I'm not.
What happens to those people that are retiring now?
I think the way this reads, if somebody retires next month, third of the spring, they're falling whatever, under whatever we say here.
Yep, exactly.
Kind of feel bad?
They're not grandfathered because.
You kind of feel bad, but you know, think about what they're, the difference of what they're really paying, they're still paying this COBRA, it's still pretty expensive. Our health insurance is still fairly expensive, it may not be quite as expensive as on the market.
But isn't the coverage a lot better?
No, I mean, you get whatever you want for coverage on the market, I mean, you decide.
Either catastrophic or higher, but then costs more.
You know, if you're in good health, then you take some high deductible plan.
That's right.
And if you're in terrible health, you take a low deductible plan.
But I see your point where, I mean, maybe amending it to say that beginning the 2017-2018 school, because I mean, if you decided, okay, next year I'm retiring, you still have time if you think, wait, I take it back, because you're not going to, I mean, I'm not even saying that you would submit now your retirement for next year, but you might have other things already set if you were going to retire at the end of this school year, but you wouldn't be as set if you were going to retire in, at the end of the following school, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like you could rearrange things on this if you thought, okay, well, I got to keep working now, so maybe having a kick in, but as of September 2017?
Can you give X amount of years now and then in a couple of years it goes down to the 18 months?
Those, those are all good thoughts, and hold a motion on the floor, doesn't it?
Oh, okay, okay.
Make a new one.
We have to vote on this first.
I mean, I do think in a way, I mean, you look out in California where, you know, there were, or, or just in general in the country, there were timeframes where you had very generous retirement benefits. And then it really does hamstring the ability to pay effectively, you know, younger people who are coming up and working. And so, I mean, it is a strong desire for us to do as best as we can for people who are retiring. And we also have a responsibility to hire good teachers, to keep, you know, you know, to keep educating, and this is a very real cost that could come up. And so I think that's why Andy wanted to limit it to 18 months. It's not what we would all ideally want, but ultimately, we're kind of responsible for the finances of the district.
But I, like, I agree, but at the same time, I don't have a problem with age, because I care more about spending money on good teachers coming in, to be honest. I'm not saying throw the teachers that have been faithful and stayed here, you know, I'm not saying throw them under the bus, but we have to put our money, I think, where it counts most. But at the same time, when Act 10 came, and it was so sudden, and all of a sudden, it was like, what the heck am I supposed to do? I mean, I, that's why I'm saying give them a little bit of time to prepare for it. That's my, you know, saying this will begin as a futurity, I guess I'd prefer to not have it, now this is happening, and someone who's retiring the end of this year, figure it out.
Well, we're giving them a little time here, nobody has talked about turning in their resignation yet.
I know.
Typically happens in March.
But when you plan to retire, are you planning for one month or are you planning for five years?
Four, six months have been very easy.
And I think what we're talking about. I mean, when you look at the, the benefits, you know, structure, I think, pre-Act 10, I mean, we're talking about something far more generous than this. I mean, this is like nothing right now, I mean, you're still going to have to pay for your own insurance. You know, it just allows them to like buy their own, you know, our insurance, which may be a little bit less than the very expensive other insurance.
Well, if it's not that big a deal, then why not?
Because it's a risk to us, I mean, if you have four people who are on our plan for an extra 18 months and they're going through.
They get melanoma and they get the, you know, the $18,000 a month, I don't know if it's 18,000, but it's like multi-thousand dollar a month, you know, chemotherapy drug. You know, melanoma is common, I mean.
It can happen at the same.
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, we're trying to limit a risk there, but.
I mean, right now, we're, we're not doing any, I mean, we're just giving it to them.
We're, we're giving it to them, and I'm, I'm saying we're lucky right now, the last four or five years, we've been lucky.
And now we're imagining.
We can remember, Mike, you can remember years before this when things weren't so lucky and it wasn't all so good. And, you know, you look at this big premium and then you think, how are we going to pay that? And where are we getting that money from? And, you know, we always get the money from the same place, we eliminate teachers.
Well, I, I can speak to the catastrophic side, but from a long time ago, even through my own experience because of what I went through with my late son. And at the time, the insurance that our corporation had, once you reached the threshold, was 100% for everything, and didn't take long to reach it. And it was shortly thereafter, they got nailed with a couple of catastrophic illnesses in a row, and corporation changed their policy. So it does happen, and sometimes it's not always what we all want, but sometimes we have to look at the bigger picture. And it's our job is to look at the bigger picture.
We did it at CISA, probably five years ago, if somebody had, I think it was just one person, but it's such a small group up there comparatively that it just really hurt.
And it's, it's the same with the district, yes, we have a, a good number of employees, and when you have a much larger group of employees and you have those increases from insurance companies, you can kind of spread that out a little bit more, and it's not quite that level. But with our limited number of employees, yeah, you get a couple of catastrophic and the rates go up, and it's going to be a big effect on everyone, so.
So it's, it's really just about risk, if you're willing to take the chance, well, then, yeah, we can stick with the 36 months. months.
You could always bring it back and drop it to eighteen.
Like a transitional period, or like, can, can you word it so like for people who retire in the next couple of years can do thirty-six months and then starting in two thousand nineteen, it goes to eighteen?
That's all the motion. No, that would have to be an amendment to the motion that's already on the floor first. Then that amendment would have to be voted on and then the motion as amended would have to be voted out.
Unless we just wanted to call what's on the floor and see what happens.
Let's call a question. Call a question, okay.
We'll look again.
The motion, the motion on the floor is that the board approve the health reimbursement arrangement and retiree health insurance plan as presented in the motion which amended the written version to stay on the plan for up to thirty-six months to change that to read up to eighteen months. Other than that, the rest of the motion, or the rest of the plan as printed, stated, correct?
Correct.
Bobby, what's the roll?
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
No.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
No.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
No.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Five, three motion carries.
It may be worth asking administration...
I don't think it's bad either. I don't disagree.
It may be worth asking administration, I mean, you know, this is the one that passed, but you know, in terms of looking at those retirees and, and just getting maybe back to us about how many there are and who falls in that for reconsideration possibly and you know, adapt them or a different motion.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, during Act Ten, did we have teachers come in and talk with these and tell us we're really heartless?
Yeah. Is that right? That makes sense.
Well, you know, and like, or, I don't know, it'd be interesting to know how many teachers, like you said, and maybe, maybe like you said, just here's five hundred dollars since we're changing this.
Then that sounds like a wonderful process that we could have administration pull some together and bring it to the operations committee meeting in the upcoming months here to discuss.
There we go. We have a little bit of time for operations here in December, so maybe that's...
That's why, that's why I'm saying it's possibly January. That's why I said the upcoming future. All right, we'll move on to item F, the HVAC project at West Elementary. I'll be looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve the agreement with Frederickson Engineering for the design and engineering of the HVAC system at West Elementary at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand five hundred.
Where'd you get that from?
From the handout. I think you guys were all...
Do we have a second?
Before the meeting.
No, it says fifty-seven.
You're looking at the top number if you go down now. Actually, I'm looking for a second of motion.
Second.
Mr. McKenna wins. That was a motion by Ms. Gelsel and a second by Mr. McKenna. Now we can discuss that letter.
So at the top there in the project understanding, they give a general idea of what they're estimating it to be at prior to doing any of the engineering and design work. What we're paying for at this point is the engineering and design work, which is on their fee on page two.
And this was the change because they added the, the air conditioning, right?
So they will give us... Yep. Design for air conditioning as well as without.
As well as without.
That's my understanding, correct?
Yeah. We're gonna get it both ways. We're gonna get it one with and one without. Any other discussion on...
Seems reasonable.
Bobby, roll call.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Item G, new hires.
That's not true. Yeah.
Nope.
On the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, but and currently, Carly got mad to look.
That's because that was done after the agenda was already...
She's singing. Oh, probably, oh, happy day.
It'll actually show up on the next...
All righty. Reservations, be looking for motion, please, or women.
I, I...
Yeah, we're gonna make an adjustment here at the request of, um, Mrs. Widelick, she requested that we, and I have the letter here if anyone wants to see it, that we move the date back to January second.
Oh.
Danielle is prepared for that administratively.
One, two, seventeen.
I need the board to accept the resignation of Lisa Widelick, Middle School Council Secretary effective January second, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Okay, and motion for Lisa Yuska, second for Mr. McKenna. Any discussion on that motion where the date has now been moved to January the second?
She's even gonna help us write one, please?
I think so. Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
And we thank Mrs. Widelick for her service to the district.
Yes.
She's a very nice classy lady. Not that we don't have a whole bunch of them already, as we do. Item I, donations, looking for a motion, please.
I move the board accept the donations, follow donations, Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Kress, three thousand dollars in memory of Marie Kress, Sound System at the Ball Theater, and an anonymous contributor of twenty-five thousand dollars in memory of Tom Strasser for the Fab Lab.
Second.
Okay, motion for Mr. Jensen, second for Lisa Yuska. Um, any discussion, comment?
That's amazing. That was the best part of reading this.
Yeah, it is. Um, yeah, it's great. I was talking with one of my coworkers today, I was mentioning about the fact that her daughter used to attend DC Everest. And the discussion always was DC Everest seems to have a benefactor named Greenhead who likes to give them a whole lot of everything. And it seems that's about the only name we ever hear coming up around here. It seems like we have a lot of different names that come up and the amounts may not be as substantial as one contributor does over there, but it all adds up and we appreciate each and every contribution that our community makes to our district, no matter how large or how small, it's always greatly appreciated, so. Anybody else got anything to throw in on that?
So this would get the Fab Lab up to fifteen thousand, right? Slightly less, yes. What's it? Slightly more than happy, yes. Um, what I'll tell you is we're seeking the grant funding and in order to even apply for the grant, you have to have twenty-five thousand dollars on hand as a match. Our donor wasn't willing to allow us to wait for the grant to come through in probably March and suggested that we continue moving forward with implementation and also seek the grant. Very generous.
Yes, very much so. Anything else, anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All righty, be looking for consideration, a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute ninety-eight point eight-five per AMC for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to discuss the mid-year evaluation of the district administrator. Motion for Mr. Mary, second for Ms. Gelsel. Bobby, roll call, please.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Motion carries.